I think we're ready to get started. All right, so just a reminder that with the meeting is being taped.
I told whoever.
If anybody else is, just let us know.
Get over it.
And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Flag is to the right. The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the minutes from the last meeting, which was Monday, June 18th. I actually was not here that meeting. So do you guys all have a chance to look at it?
Yes.
Any comments?
Can we pass those, we can't pass those.
Ken, two of you are in attendance as long as the two of you that are in attendance vote.
There's a full call, isn't there?
Yeah, because you were there.
So what, what do you want to do?
So there's two of you that were present. So therefore, the two that were present can make, one can make a motion, the other one can second, they both can agree and then they send it into the record.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two of sentence.
Correct. All right, the warrants.
Okay, I have read through and approved warrants in the amounts of $277,395.33. We should enter that into the record.
Student rep update, welcome back.
Hello.
Hi.
So, all schools have started back up. We have 16 new teachers at the high school. I'm not sure who's new at the middle school and all the others, but I'm sure there are some. The, at the high school, we have the welcome back assembly on Friday and we're, fall sports are off to a pretty good start. Girls volleyball played in Millis last night and won 3-1. And on Friday, they play their first home game. And they're playing Bellingham. And then, high school football is also their first home game against Hollister. Both soccer teams have started their season and the high school golf team played against Medway last night and Norton won. And then tonight, the Norton is playing Ashland, or they were, hopefully they get that right now.
Great, thank you. All right, next is the opening of the school report for the LG North with Principal Mrs. Catherine Luke. Welcome.
Welcome. It's with great pride and pleasure that I report to you in my eighth, in my eighth year as principal of the LG North Elementary School. The start of school was a tremendous success. Students and staff entered their, their school with smiling faces, ready to begin the challenges of a new school year. Thank you to the LG North PTC for writing positive messages on the blacktop for our first day of school. These positive words helped to set the tone for a great day and a great year. This year, we opened our doors with 264 students. This number includes 56 kindergarteners divided into three sections, giving us 18 or 19 students per classroom. In the first grade, we have 69 students distributed into four sections. Each section has 16, 17, or 18 students. There are 72 students currently in our second grade. We have three sections of second grade with 23, 24, 25 students in each class. In our third grade, we have 67 students. Our third grade is divided into three classrooms with a total of 22 or 23 students in each classroom. Our enrollment is currently 21 students less than at this time last year. So some of the different varying numbers are, we had to move out recently, just as of yesterday. This past summer, the LG North was a very busy place. Our custodians were busy cleaning, stripping and waxing floors, moving classrooms, and getting our school ready for the new school year. I had to say that Mr. Aragio, Mr. Washer, and Mr. Johnson take great pride in their work and it reflects in the cleanliness of this building. Additionally, Mrs. Brooks works diligently over the last few weeks in August, getting ready for students and staff in the principal's office. Safety is a major concern for her, so she's working to ensure every student's transportation is in place, greeting visitors and new students, or dismissing students. As she's doing that, she's working to make sure our young students are safe. The hard work of our custodians and our administrative assistant don't go unnoticed and it's very much appreciated. This year, we have two new staff members at the LG North. Our first is Carolyn Kettie, and she's here tonight. Everybody give her the wave. Carolyn graduated from Boston College and then she went on to get her master's degree in education from Leslie University. She also has a master's degree in English from Northeastern State. In addition to working here at the LGN, she's a professor of ESL at Bridgewater, um, excuse me, Bristol Community College. A fun fact, although she doesn't think it's a fun fact about her, she is a personal trainer and a group fitness instructor. In her spare time, if she has any, that is, she runs outdoor bootcamps for adults and kids. Carolyn has four children right here in the Norton Public Schools and she's extremely happy and excited to be joining Team Norton. Our second new staff member is Mr. Jeremy Place. There he is. He's our new music teacher. Jeremy works full-time between the LG North and the JCS elementary schools. He received his degree from Bridgewater State University this past December. Jeremy was a returning student as he was a stay-at-home dad for his two boys when they were very young and they're both here tonight as well. In the spring of 2018, Jeremy took several long-term substitute positions in Mansfield as the middle school orchestra chorus teacher, as a fifth-grade substitute teacher, as the high school orchestra and general music teacher. Jeremy also substituted for two months at Freetown Elementary School, another K-3 school, for a maternity leave there. A fun fact about Jeremy is that during his stay at home, he performed, he performed with a bluegrass band and still does. The band performs at pubs, weddings, festivals, backyard parties, and anywhere that will have them. The band also toured Norway three times in 2013, 2015, and 2017. And that's the update for the LG North. Thank you for coming tonight and it's a pleasure to host you. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
So is bluegrass that popular in Norway?
I love bluegrass.
I have to have a concert.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the new staff members. Hope you enjoy it here. All right, transportation update. Mr. Wells.
Transportation has been a primary focus for about the past month. We kicked it off this week and we found that we did have some serious capacity issues with the middle school DL combined. We've been working to smooth those capacity issues out, trying to move different stops to provide some balance on the buses. We still do have three buses where we're a little bit higher on the, the number of riders that are on those buses. What, one of the drivers that we've had is, I found that we received a lot of registrations early in the year. We started out, the first week of August, we had about 1,200 people that were registered to ride the bus. And we've been adding every single week, we added 121 in the past week with 50 just being added on the fourth and fifth alone. So we, we've had a lot of registrations are coming in. We're still trying to work these into the routes and get all the stops set up. At the same time, these students are showing up at most stops they're riding the buses. So every day is a little bit of a challenge, but we continue to work through and try and find a way to smooth them along.
So do we have any idea why so many registered late? Are they just not looking at the email? Are they, the email, because I mean, we had a deadline.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Only a few people really reached out and said, you know, I forgot, can I still register? Or we had a lot, we did have some move-ins over the summer. We had some folks that even moved in over the, the Labor Day weekend, so they had to register.
Right. I understand that. It just seems like a huge number.
I would agree.
To try to register that, you know, I think people have to understand that we, there's a process in place. It may be a little bit different this year because of the fourth through eighth. This doesn't, this didn't just happen like some people think it did because you weren't working on it all summer. It happened because of all of these people who chose not to register by the deadline. There's deadlines in place for a reason and that's what caused, you know, this debacle on the first day. So I just want to make that known because, you know, go ahead.
You know, it's frustrating because we did have, and did publish rides, and we did have buses where they were supposed to be. But we did receive from the bus company, basically a ridership of 2,300. They were riding every single student everywhere. We gave it back to them, we said, this isn't good enough. We met the publishing deadline. We had buses, none of them at full capacity at that time, none of them. So my social media folks on Facebook with their lack of information just don't know what they're talking about. They were ready to go, but this is what happened. On the 28th, five registrations. On the 29th, 14 registrations. On the 30th, 41 registrations. On the first day of school, 53 registrations. And yesterday, one. We don't have a transportation office, you folks all know that. It were, literally it's been everybody in the office trying to figure out a way to bubble everything down. We eliminated a tier. Now, the response from the bus company, which I hope tonight you take a vote to bring the bus company here at your next meeting and you ask them what the problem is. Because I can't get a phone call back as a superintendent of school. I'm on the record. I cannot get a phone call back. We've asked twice, I've left messages, and I'm not getting anything back. So, and the bus company received phone calls and blamed the school department. And that's what I want to talk about with the bus company. It's a $3.1 million contract over three years that the taxpayers are paying for. I think we're due some answers. Furthermore, I want to know where we were and how many buses we had six years ago when I came there. 15. We're down 300 students. Same number of buses. Everybody's always attacking us about enrollment and so on and so forth. So why do we still have 15 buses? Why do I have to watch a bunch of buses for the last five years coming in with 19 kids, 21 kids? So we eliminated, we did the right thing. We eliminated the tier, saved the money which was directly into the classroom. And from there, because, you know, be mindful, 7.98 positions were let go, an entire department of 19 people were let go as well, as, as part of this. And we've let go almost 40 people over the last five years that I've been here, including the comment tonight about enrollment being down in this building. You're down one teacher in this building, which we could have definitely used in grade two this year because the numbers are climbing to 25. So, I'm entering that into the record for you as well, that we did in fact absorb that cut. So, how do you handle these registrations? How do you get people onto the bus? We know that in one area of town, that kids are assigned a bus, but then just get on any bus that they want to get on. So we're working to try to adjust that with families to say there is a parental responsibility to make sure your child is on the right, right bus. In one area of town, the buses were ready to go and in the last two days, 20 students registered to get on those buses. If we don't think 20, so we just one way or the other. So we're working now to see if the bus company will work with us on getting another bus to that area of town, if you will, that would then alleviate the rest of the town as that tier. But that's going to cost us money. So what we're trying to do right now is, and why I would like a response back, is we've received a comment back about how much it would cost. The contract reads according to what I read, that we have a tiered system that we get charged for the day. The way I read it is a bus is used multiple times, multiple tiers. We're now being asked that if we want to bring that bus back, that we have to pay for that one bus at full cost of over $50,000. Well, if the contract reads that when a bus is doing multiple tiers, it's $50,000 rounding, why does a bus to be put back on cost me the same amount if it's only going to do one run, one tier to two schools?
How many, how many, how many students can a bus take?
Seated well, seated well, it's approximately 44 students to 50 students, depending on the size of students. And we have some buses that are bigger than others in the past as well. But the point, but the point.
I thought, I thought the number was 70, so I thought it was.
I don't think, I haven't seen 70, but I can get you a number. I haven't seen 74 because I don't think we have the extended cabback buses on the back.
Right, the 71 passenger buses are based on smaller children, 13-inch wide children and three to a seat.
So maybe 60 is a fair, because 70s buses are taking smaller kids.
It's like blended 55 is, is, is the comfortable right number to use something else.
And, and getting on the bus right now is a lot more comfortable than, or a lot safer than getting on the street corner. And so that's why we're picking. We had one area of town on the first day, we had parents walking onto buses and pulling kids off the bus because they didn't have a seat. Well, as you all know, on emergency days, if I call an emergency and I need to get families picked, students picked up or come home on a snow day, since I've been here, I've called two days where I've asked the bus company to pick up every student on the, on the side street. Doesn't matter if they've paid for bus or not because it's an emergency situation. But it is, it is part of, you know, $1.6 million worth of cuts that we made. Ridership is, is an issue because a lot of our families now are free, especially if you're going to the DL and the middle school because it is a town-wide pickup. We've, we've had some positives. We think that down the road, we can probably move the start time of the middle school by anywhere from 12 to 15 more minutes, which then will also impact the JCS getting as much as maybe 20 to 25 minutes to the good. So that's a, that's a positive thing, but.
I just want to kind of circle, circle back. Now, when we're talking about this one particular area of town, what's the overflow, do we have a number of the overflow that we're, like, could we send one of our 15 passenger buses to, and keep it on our end? Because if it's going to cost us 50 grand, we haven't saved anything. Where if we have someone that can put our 15 passenger van there that we own.
Yeah, we don't because they're, those are all doing runs for special education in the morning. And they're, they're gone. I had an email there, because I asked that question, they're gone from, you know, 7:30, 7:15 in the morning, some of them aren't back until 9:45 in the morning because they do our longest runs. We do have a bus that we use for athletics that we're, we're thinking of potentially putting on and then finding our own driver and putting that bus back into the routes. But right now, I'd like to, I'd like to financially try to find a way to get another bus onto these routes because it's going to be a positive impact. And by the way, this doesn't include the easily, I mean, I think I told you in an email, 13 phone calls I responded to myself and six emails, I think it was, plus the let's talk, which has been a request for bus changes, of which people have been very good and very patient, I have to say, but, you know, we're, we're trying to deal with getting those resolved for families as well. So that's, you know, that, that's kind of where we are. We appreciate the families that have reached out and are understanding and they want it resolved. We do too. We are seeing some movements in buses in the last day. We saw more movement again today. We've had one parent that has asked for a refund, I believe it's been one, I could be wrong, but is it more than one? It's one. And we'll, we'll work that with the family. That's, that's, that's not a difficult issue to resolve. But that's, that's where we are right now. That's what we're looking at.
So can I, so based on the number of riders last year compared to this year, are we at the same?
No, you're up.
About how many?
About 100.
Okay, so we have 100 more than last year, so that's.
So that, so, so what you're talking about is 100 more and then the anticipation of 126 that showed up.
Right.
Right, so you can, I guess you could say that you have a swing for the first day of school, that's pretty significant.
Right.
But it's 126 that came in, you're up about 100. We don't know why. You know, everybody always complains about the 350, but yet people, I think in some cases, most of it is because our biggest classes right now are going in, are going through grades five, six, seven, eight. So that age group.
Are we up 100 people who are coming in at 350?
No. No. Most of the people coming in late are actually free. Either free because of free reduced lunch or free because of two miles or greater.
The people who are not free to owe the 350, have they already paid? People who are registering who's late?
There are a lot of payments, but not all payments are right now.
Not all. Because some of the concerns that I have, you know, all of a sudden, I guess I don't understand where parents are coming from if they register their kids for the bus on the first day of school. Did they just think they're going to send the kids out the door and wait at a bus stop and hope that their kid gets picked up?
I can't answer that. The problem is that I, I have what I call the Fox 25 problem. I can't leave a kid at a stop who's in first grade.
No, well, I think that's what caused some of the overcrowding problem.
Because I'm, I'm killed, work killed.
Right. Right, I totally get that, but I think that's what caused some of the problem.
I, there's no doubt.
So, I, I think I would rather, I would rather talk to Fox 25 than say, hey, we need to cut another teacher now because we have to pick up a $50,000 bus. I'll talk to them and I'll explain. I'll say, hey, listen, this is the scenario, and we've had this conversation 100 times. We will, we did our due diligence, we let people know well ahead of time, you had to register, we did it in multiple fashions, we told them very firmly what the deadline was, it was not a mystery. And people still choose to ignore it. My, my thought on this is, honestly, at this point, I, I kind of approach this with, we told you what the deadline was, you didn't need it. At this point, other than, other than the people who are by law free, K through six, two plus miles, I get those guys, they're out of the conversation.
That's a predominant number of our people coming in registered late.
Anyone else, anyone else who, I don't know what the, what the actual cutoff was on the thing. I, I know that I registered my kids. It was a while.
But the issue is that.
So can I just suggest, I suggest that we just go back and say, okay, if, if you're paid a ride, then go back and look and say, okay, starting with the most recent date. People on that, we cannot accommodate you. People, next, next day forward, cannot accommodate you. And keep on going till we don't have to hire another bus. Second option, costs us 50,000, approximately 60 people, anybody who applies late, and this should be, by the way, what we do next year, if you apply late, it is $833. That's the cost of a person to ride that bus. It's not 350. I know everybody thinks we're making a ton of money on this. We're losing 500 bucks a kid. And that's if everybody pays. That's why we, it costs us whatever, $1.1 million a year. So, I mean, at some point, there has to be a consequence.
So the, the issue, there's a couple of issues. There's only a core area going forward to try to resolve this problem for future years. The first one is that you have to have a registration regardless of the student is free because it's more than two miles, less than two miles and they're paying. And that's a drop dead date. And you guarantee, except for those families that register afterwards that are guaranteed to free, I still have to provide it to them because I can't deny them, which is a predominant number of the 126 that we've just got. So that's the problem, is that we've got to get everybody on the same page to understand, register your child, it's free, you're not paying anything. You are due because you're more than two miles away from school.
But we need it because of bus routes.
Because, but we need it in order to be, to be able to, to schedule our routes and feel comfortable with our routes and move buses around for our routes of meetings.
So I understand that we have to provide sort of people a bus. By law, mandates, you know, we're all very familiar with mandates on this board. However, I don't think there's anything that says it has to be door-to-door service. So, somebody who comes in in the last week saying, yeah, the closest bus to you right now that we have is XYZ, it's eight blocks, 10 blocks.
Well, your, your policy is up to one mile.
I, I mean, I apologize, it's inconvenient for them, but it's super inconvenient for everybody who registered their kids on time. It's super inconvenient for the front office who now has to go through, I don't know, 10-hour days working on transportation to try and rectify this problem. It, it doesn't make any sense. I mean, at some point, you have to say to them, hey, listen, I, I understand you late, and listen, people who moved into town in the last week, I'd give them an exception, obviously, I get that, but people who just didn't want to be bothered, well, we can't be bothered. We're trying to educate kids, we're, we're not Uber. This is, this is not Uber.
But another point to that, Dinesh, is this isn't the first year that we had the registration process.
No, it's the second year, people should know.
We are, I can understand if people were confused because we just started the registration process. This is the second year. So how many people last year registered on their first day of school? Do we know?
Not, not these numbers.
It wasn't these numbers. So there's a core group of people that just were like, ah, and now everybody else is paying the price for it.
And I believe it was double-digit, this was under Lynx administration in the business office. I believe it was at least, at least two handfuls of communication, of text messages, emails, and all that type of stuff. I, phone calls. So, our biggest issue is that when you have your buses not yet at capacity, ready to go for day one, and all of a sudden, 126 people show up on the Thursday, Friday, and Tuesday of school, how do you, how do you not have full? I mean, there are kids getting onto buses that may just be getting onto a bus because that's the closest one and they think they're supposed to be getting on it.
Right.
The second part of the resolution is if you go to a hard date and you have that flexibility with the people who are supposed to get it, right, is you go to eliminating some of your bus, busing by statute, seven to 12, you don't have to bus.
Well, we all, we all know that that's on the table.
Yeah, that is on the table.
And then.
Would it have to be just seven to 12? It can be K through 12, except if you are two miles.
Correct. And then, which I don't think is a good thing in terms of safety and all that other stuff, especially with 123. I mean, it took me 25 minutes to get from Wheat College to my office.
I think, I think we get that, but I mean, listen, my, my kids, I mean, one of the kids is going to have to walk to school. I mean, it's, I put my own kid at risk, but at the same time, we don't have money.
And I think the hardest part for me with this and the frustration part that I have with this is this is a perfect example of we told you so. Because we put out a proposal to eliminate bus fees and we would be in a perfect situation still today. It didn't work. So our goal is to make sure that we get the last three buses, so now we're down to three out of 15, that we continue to shift. We believe we have one more area to look at where we potentially can shift a bus. It might mean that the students are going to be on the bus a little longer because they might have to take a bus that's coming across town, but it is what it is. It is what it is.
On their tags, did they, did they have what bus number they were? No.
No, no, no. We, because the, we, we would have to be printing out those every other day because there's constant change going on. The other thing I think is, that is something that we want to look at, and I've asked Matt to collect some data on, is, is drop-off and pickups and specialty pickups and drop-offs. And can we please drop them off at this place and that place on Tuesdays and Thursdays? And only at Bob's house on Wednesdays and Fridays? It's becoming a little bit of an issue because we, we're, we're going to end up with an issue and it's going to be all of us with eggs on our face. So we're going to, we're going to have to have a sit-down and have our hard policy on what do we accept for a pickup and drop-off? There's always exceptions, we know that, but we, we have to, we have to make sure that, you know, we're, we're safe. So, our goal is that we're going to run one more day tomorrow, we made some more shifts again today for tomorrow morning, those have been communicated to families. We're going to see if that shift helps, but through the help of Wendy from Bloom, who's housed at the, at the DL school, she's been able, through Matt, been able to kind of make some changes. Jen's office has gotten involved, Ivan handling, trying to handle the phone calls and the emails. Terry, not so much necessarily in the last couple of days with Donna, but Laurie have been bombarded with phone calls, especially Terry who's in the office by herself on Friday. So, I mean, it's, it's, we need, we need a better plan of attack to go down this route. And we need, in my opinion, here are the routes. Please take and do those routes, not for 2,300 kids. We're not asking you to bus 2,300 kids, we're asking you to bus these 1,200 that are registered. And that's not what happened. And it was these two that caught it, sent it back to the bus company and said, this, this doesn't work, you need to reroute this. And that took place and it was published appropriately by August 7th of the legal law.
So in that vein, and in the vein of you not getting calls back, I'm going to echo something I said, I think last year, last spring, we should also start looking at privatization of the buses. We should look at buy our own buses, using capital improvement money, buy our own buses, run our own buses.
Yeah, Matt and I talked about this this afternoon actually for a little bit. I, I do think it's a, it's a work, it's a piece of research and work that we need to do. The worst that comes out of it is what we've done in the past with other departments where we say it's actually more expensive to privatize.
If it is, it is, but the, I mean, the reality is, and you've been this district a long, I'm sure it's the same in other districts, we put this up to bid and we get one bid.
Yeah, it is also an opportunity for us right now to be able to talk to as many companies as we want to talk about, about what we're looking to do and what we have. I do think we need to change our bid. we need to change our bid. I do think that you folks will see some significant change to the way we go out to bid. We're gonna have to do some pre-work. We might have, we might put out multiple bids as well. But I do agree that we need to find, put away some time in, in hour days in the next, I would say by October, and find a way that Matt and I can get into a room, talk to some experts in the field and say, if I wanted to lease buses, I know local school district is significantly smaller than we are, but they lease their buses, they've been leasing their buses and it's just a lease. Every three years, it's a new lease, but all of the oil changes and all that is taken care of. There's always a backup available in case something happens. Do I pay for your drivers? You gotta look at the 20 hours and what that means to the town side and term of benefits and so on and so forth.
Kind of look at it though.
But it, but you gotta look at it.
All right. So do you want us to have the bus company in then?
Yeah, I, I think it's time to, because it's a letter that comes from you through my office that requests that they come to a meeting in the near future to discuss, you know, you know, what's going, what's going on. They can, they can say no, they don't wanna come. They're more than happy to. I'm not looking at the program, but I am looking for, how does this math add, add up right now? If it's one bus that's being asked to do a run for the elementary middle school, how does, how does, on one side of town, really, really, a bus that's actually gonna go to one area of town, how does, how does it cost me $323 a day while all the other buses are costing me $360 a day? And they're doing multiple tiers. And I understand that we caused a headache for them because we had to say to them, I'm sorry, we're eliminating a tier. So they lost.
But they knew that, but they knew that back in the spring. So it's not like we just sprung that on them this summer. They didn't know that. So you guys have any thoughts on that?
What year of the conference do we have?
We're up.
We're up?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be going up.
Any thoughts on how the bus company come in?
Eliminating a tier or are they coming?
No, to come in and meet with us to talk this through a little bit more. Because the comment that you made that's interesting to me is we have the same number of buses, but again, like everyone likes to say, the enrollment's down. So that's...
Well, the argument back is it's a lot of square mileage, it's a lot of place. And I said, well, you know, we, you can be, be on a bus for under an hour. I mean, there's no specific regulation that says a kid can't be on an hour, for an hour and a half. It's within special education that that comes out. It's about sending kids out. A kid can be on a bus. I mean, kids go to a sports event, you know, three seasons a year, 27 games.
We send them on field trips.
We send them on field trips. You know, we're trying to get them to school and provide, and don't forget, you're providing a service, folks. The Norton School Committee is providing a service that it does not need to provide under the law as it pertains to pay and ride. And there's at least two of us at the table here that are residents of this town, who live in two different communities, where it's basically, you fill the bus and pay and ride after all of the required pay, students are taken care of. And I know in one town that, I'm sorry, the bus is full, there is no pay and ride option.
But in this case, the perfect storm this year was they were under the statute that we'd have to transport them.
That's the curve ball in office. The curve ball is that you, no matter what date you establish, the hardball date, when it comes to that student, if you will, if they don't register, unless you're a student, the parents don't register the child, the fact of the matter is I have no plan. I have to provide them if they're over the two. I don't have a chance. Which is where a predominant number of these situations are. Remember, you're, you're now, you're, you're a district that centralizes fourth through 12th grade. A lot of communities are K to five elementary schools. So they have neighborhood schools that busing was down. I have given you the story that my own child, K to five, was one bus for the entire area, for the entire school with 275 kids. So, and you don't need to vote to have them come in, you can just, you enact and write a letter and say that either have them meet with you as the chair and me and Matt in the vice chair, or have it as a public, a public meeting.
What do you guys wanna do? What are your thoughts on this?
See if they respond or we'll work it out then.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do.
All right. Next is a vote on Fall Town Meeting articles and capital improvement recommendation. Again, Mr. Wells.
So we have, we moved forward the article this summer, and we have 281,000 for K-12 classroom materials, 99,000 for interactive projectors, 61,000 for students in need for a longer day, 24,000 for professional development in some key areas. And then we moved forward to new, moved up a couple of capital items in the system and data backups off-line storage for 60,000. We have an aging system that has been non-functional at this point and we're worried about our backup. So this would give us that backup system. And then the second piece was the virtual infrastructure replacement for services storage of $62,000. This is an aging system which will support our virtual environment. It certainly is part of, both of these are part of our disaster recovery and making sure that we're able to operate our network.
This isn't one of those ones that needs to be there in its entirety, is it?
No, no, none of these are. These are, these are not MSBA projects where you have to reline that. This, this would be a vote of moving forward the school department articles and capital plan as written.
Anybody have any questions or comments on any of this? Is there a motion?
No, no questions.
Sure?
Yeah, yeah, I was just thinking. No, no questions.
Okay. As soon as I start laughing, I know he's gonna say, wait a minute. I know he is. All right. So is there a motion to approve Fall Town Articles and Capital Improvement Plan?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
All right, next. So we just had some correspondence over the summer that we just want to read into record here. So I'm just gonna read through all the correspondence that we had. On July 18th, 2018, the entire school committee signed a letter to the Norton Board of Selectmen. And it states, Dear Board of Selectmen, it has come to our attention that the town manager, Mike Unitz, recently addressed both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee regarding the school budget without notifying the school department that he was doing, was going to do so. While this is not the first time he has done this, we feel this time was particularly egregious. It was not an unplanned remark or something that was said in response to a question from a member of one of the public bodies. This was a prepared statement with visual aid. There was no notice given to the school department that he was going to do this, and it was not presented on the agenda in any way that could have been interpreted by a reasonable person to mean that he intended to discuss school budget numbers. We strongly, we strongly disagree with the content, tone, and conclusion that Mr. Unitz seemed to be presenting. We will now, we will now sit down with both Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen at a future date to counter his erroneous assertions. While we always support a lively debate about the correct way to fund our town, a one-sided conversation without the entity being discussed even present is far from that. Furthermore, it is clear from the approach taken by Mr. Unitz that he is not qualified to discuss the intricacies of the school budget. The school committee would never think that he was qualified to publicly discuss the details of another department's budget. We feel confident that if we ever did so, the Board of Selectmen would certainly take exception to it. We therefore assume that you all understand why we take exception to Mr. Unitz's presentation. We respectfully request that Mr. Unitz be instructed to include the school department in any future public discussion on the school side of our town's budget. This type of thing cannot continue if we are to move our town forward. We can all do better, but when we fail, it needs to be clear that it is unacceptable. Thank you for your consideration regarding this matter. Sincerely, Norton School Committee and each one of us signed it. To respond on August 8th to the school committee from the Board of Selectmen Chair, Chairman, Mr. Robert Kimble, Dear School Committee, I am receipt of your letter dated July 18th, 2018, as well as the town manager's correspondence to the Board of Selectmen, copy enclosed. In response to the comments contained in your letter, every public meeting provides you opportunity for discussion on any debate, on any budget, as well as the presentation of updated financial information. The town manager often reviews matters of finance with the Board of Finance Committee, including discussion on local receipts, state revenue, and various departmental budgets, with or without a departmental presence. In addition, all Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen meetings are posted public, meetings that anyone is free to attend, as I often do. Section 6-3B of the Town Charter stipulates that the town man, end quotes, "The town manager has a sole authority to prepare and submit the proposed annual budget to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee," end quote. It is also reasonable that providing updates and a timely manner to the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen concerning the finances of the town are both necessary and justified. As to your remarks, the town manager discussed the intricacies of the school budget. This just was not the case. I was present at the meeting where factual information was provided comparing the appropriations for school budget from Norton, Mansfield, Foxborough, and Easton, see attached. At no time during the meeting was a presentation made on how the Norton Public School Department operates. There was also no representation or discussion on whether the funds appropriated were sufficient. As a matter of fact, at the open public forum on the budget, the town manager emphasized that he was not saying the amount was sufficient, but was all that was available in order to live within the constraints of Proposition 2 and a half. I have asked the town manager that if he is aware of any meeting at which the intricacies of the school budget may be discussed going forward, that he, that he so informed the superintendent in advance. Likewise, I would request that, as similar courtesy, he extend to the board and the town manager about the school committee if there is to be any discussion concerning the performance of the town manager at any open meeting. In advance of the school committee commencing fiscal year 20 budget discussion, I would suggest that a preliminary meeting be scheduled with the chairs and vice chairs of the school committee and Board of Selectmen along with the superintendent and town manager before the FY '20 budget process. I would recommend an early September meeting to discuss October town meeting. In addition, we must strive to convey factual and timely information to the residents of Norton. Misrepresentation of information only fuels divisiveness, and it is time that we work together with common goals to restore the community's faith and its leaders in the process. I know you all agree that strength lies in unity, and we all want to allocate available resources in the most responsive way possible for the community as a whole. I am also available to discuss issues. I hope that the superintendent and town manager continue their open-minded communication. I also suggest that other two committees do the same with quarterly joint meetings. Sincerely, Robert W. Kimble, Chairman. The last letter is dated July 20th, 2018, to Mr. Kimble from our town manager, Mike Unitz. Dear Mr. Kimble, I wish to clarify some inaccuracies in the letter from the school committee dated July 18th, a copy of which is attached. At the Finance Committee meeting held on July 11th, 2018, and the Selectmen's meeting on July 12th, 2018, I presented information depicting how the town of Norton compared with Easton, Foxborough, and Mansfield, and the town's commitment of available revenue to the FY '19 Norton Public Schools budget. There was no tone, no debate, and certainly no conclusion, just presentation of facts. The budgets were finalized and voted in May. At no time did I discuss the intricacies of the school budget, nor did I discuss whether or not the revenue was sufficient to operate the Norton Public Schools. As a matter of fact, in all my presentations on the FY '19 budget, including the June 26 budget presentation open to all Norton residents, I have emphasized that, emphasized that I was not saying the amount of money provided was sufficient, but was all we had available within the constraints of Prop 2 and a half. I understand that the school department has autonomy to spend their funds any way they choose so. I also emphasized that during my presentations. As the town manager, it is my job to make recommendations to the Finance Committee on allocations of available funds to all departments, including the school department, to create one budget, one town budget. At the town meeting in May, there were many people who strongly scrutinized the Finance Committee's recommendation for the school budget. My job is to keep the Finance Committee, Selectmen, and taxpayers informed. I believe providing factual data and visual aids to demonstrate how our commitment of available resources, tax revenue, local receipts, and cherry sheet revenue to the school budget compares to our neighbors is important for all to understand. Though I emphasized previously, I have not once during my entire FY '19 budget process discussed the intricate, quote, "intricacies of the school budget," end quote. I believe my 14 years serving on this, on a school committee, most as chairman, provide me with the qualifications to understand the intricacies of the school budget. Sincerely, Michael D. Unitz. I think that, just kind of in conclusion of the back and forth this summer, I think the request for the school district presence at meetings where schools are gonna be discussed was a reasonable one to streamline public understanding and budget concerns and maximize communication and collaboration between the two boards. Unfortunately, it seems like our two boards do continue, continue to move in different directions. In any case, as a school committee, we will continue to work hard every day to improve the education provided to the students of the town of Norton. That is our mandate, and we will continue to move Elementary window project. Mr. Lozat.
As Wade comes up, so that you know, we're at the stage now of the most important part, which is color selections. We are simply asking for input, most of it because right now, your committee consists of three men, and we thought maybe some other perspectives would be important.
Thank you.
Without being inappropriate, I guess, but allowing for, since I'm somewhat colorblind, this is probably a good idea. But I like that one.
A couple, a couple of things that are really important, and I'll let Wade talk, is that this process is moving along, especially the last few days. Just look to your right with those shades. Those aren't gonna protect us from really, really hot days, the way new windows with shades are going to. And never mind the envelope, it's becoming a lot tighter than I don't think it's possible. So Wade?
So, thank you for having me here tonight. Just to give you an update on what's going on with this project. It's a, it's a huge project. It's something that I, this is, I'm going on my 19th year here with the school department, and I think windows, the three elementary schools have really just kinda changed the whole dynamics of this. So it's pretty cool, it's pretty exciting for me to get to this point. And actually, for the first time in my regime here as director of facilities, start a MSBA project from the very beginning to the end. So I'm extremely happy for that. But if I could just take a minute, I'm not really here to discuss, I'm here to discuss the windows, but I would like to publicly thank my 20-man roster custodians this summer. They did an amazing job this summer. We have 20 guys that work all summer long to that clean five buildings. And I think if you guys walk the buildings for the beginning of schools, they've never looked better. I'm so proud of where our facilities are right now and how hard these guys continue to work. They are going above and beyond. I mean, we're doing everything from jump stocking, you know, cars that are, you know, that teachers are leaving their lights on to, to really put furniture together, and on top of that, doing their job. So I'm so proud of who we have on staff. We just recently hired two, so we're finally back up to 22. But it was only 20 men all summer that cleaned all five schools and kept our grounds looking good. So I wanted to publicly thank them. I, I, I mean, if you see them in the schools, really, I mean, just, it means so much to them just to get, just to get a pat on the back. I mean, they work so hard. You know, it's not the most glamorous job in the world, but I'll tell you what, this crew loves their job. They love doing what they do, and they love serving the kids and the staff members of New York Public Schools. So I just wanted to take a minute and do that.
Wade, can I just, can I, because I would like to say that, that we also appreciate the job that they do. It is nice to, you know, and we see them in the schools, and they're smiling, high-fiving kids, and, you know, talking with us and about how their day is going. And there's also one in particular, Joe, I think from JCS. I see him on Twitter. Man, does that guy love his job. I mean, he is, he is so excited about how the floors and the paint looks for the kids to come back.
Have you seen it? You can see your face in the floor. They're gorgeous over there.
I saw the pictures that he put up on Twitter. So I just, because I know of not...
He puts more up there than his father in my desk.
So, yeah, just...
Wait, what?
Just, just recently, he married my daughter, actually.
Oh!
That is my son-in-law.
I actually did not know that before I came to the office.
Fun fact.
Well, tell me, he's doing a great job.
Joe has big shoes to fill, as you know. He hears all the old stories of my old glory days. So I think, I think he's trying to fill them rather quickly.
I thought you were gonna say Fred. I thought so too.
No, well, he's maybe Fred, sir, honor.
You went with Fred.
It's, he really loves his job. I gotta say, honestly, my, our last hires for the last couple of years, they're just tremendous guys. They just, they love being here. And, you know, it means so much with everything going on with buses and, I mean, just, just the academic school day, to have somebody that you can just see walking down the hall smiling and willing to give a high five or whatever's going on. Conversation during lunch about the football game or how they did at their baseball game. It means so much to me to watch them interact with the kids. And it's really cool. We're unique. I mean, Norton is special. We know that, right? I mean, we have such a, we're so lucky to work here. And I think to, when you walk the halls, and we have that privilege, it's pretty cool to watch. So, so I thank you.
Yeah.
And I wanna thank them publicly, so.
Be sure to thank them for us, yeah.
T2 is our architect firm, and they began preparation of plans and specifications for the windows and exterior doors and ADA upgrade projects on July 1st. The architect conducted surveys and investigation work, which included the removal of several existing windows. This information obtained allowed the designers to accurately depict the work to be contracted for. At the same time, a written specification for the work was prepared that will provide very detailed requirements for virtually every material that would be used by these contractors. The architects' plans and specifications underwent a review by the MSBA, the MSBA Building and Envelope Consultant, and the Onus Project Manual Manager, ACG. Based on the review, the architect prepared additional details and clarification recommended, recommended by the reviewers. The plans and specifications are currently undergoing a second review of and clarification process. In addition to the plans and specifications, the designer is preparing the documents for receiving public bids. The documents provided very detailed instructions and requirements for submitting a bid for the general contract. Advertising the bids will begin on September 19th with a deadline to receive bids on October 9th. The contract is expected to be awarded by October 16th. The contractor's first task will be to submit a schedule to complete the project at all three schools by October 31st, 2019. The rough schedule that we're looking at right now is begin work early spring 2019 and finish by the end of August 2019 before the next school year starts. So we got these drawings from the architects of the three different colors that are up, that we can use, that are going out to bid for these three schools. We looked at them quickly during our, during our meeting, and we kind of all came to different conclusions. Dr. Vayetta thought it would be fun to put it into the schools and let teachers, staff... This information obtained allowed the designers to accurately depict the work to be contracted for. At the same time, a written specification for the work was prepared that will provide very detailed requirements for virtually every material that would be used by these contractors. The architects' plans and specifications underwent a review by the MSBA, the MSBA building envelope consultant, and the Onus project manual manager, ACG. Based on the review, the architect prepared additional details and clarification to recommend, recommendation, recommend, recommended by the reviewers. The plans and specifications are currently undergoing a second review and clarification process. In addition to the plans and specifications, the designer is preparing the documents for receiving public bids. The documents provided very detailed instructions and requirements for submitting a bid for the general contract. Advertising the bids will begin on September 19th with a deadline to receive bids on October 9th. The contract is expected to be awarded by October 16th. The contractor's first task will be to submit a schedule to complete the project at all three schools by October 31st, 2019. The rough schedule that we're looking at right now is begin work early spring 2019 and finish by the end of August 2019, before the next school year starts. So, we got these drawings from the architects of the three different colors that are up, that we can use, that are going out to bid for these three schools. We looked at them quickly during our, during our meeting, and we kind of all came to different conclusions. Dr. Vayetta thought it would be fun to put it into the schools and let teachers, staff, principals have their kind of view on it. And interestingly enough, the LGN, their top choice was green, the JCS' top choice was blue, and the Yell' top choice was beige.
Purple's not an option, Wade?
Purple is not an option. We're really looking for these windows to last long-term, and we're afraid of the fade factor, and if you look at all three of these colors, all three of these colors, we were told by the manufacturer are going to hold up to the sun, wear, and tear, so 30, 40 years from now, when we're all still here, talking about the next set of windows, these windows should still be looking good, so.
I'm just commenting, I'm not going to be here.
Just you and I.
I'm hoping.
Just Jen and I.
Maybe some general.
I'll probably still be here.
So, so it's interesting, because, you know, one of the things that's, that's really important to me is if we want to do this right, we want to think about what he's saying, which is we want to think about 30, 40 years out and what these window colors mean. And I, I myself, as he knows, I have some concern about the two darker colors, just because of sun and weather in this area and so on and so forth. And that's, you know, I've been pushing the beige. I, you know, I wonder about having three different colors and controversy of that, because there's all kinds of other controversy. But if you have strong, important views, we'd love to hear them from you, so that we can, you know, add it to the, to the discussion.
I feel really strongly.
I do, too.
I literally, it's not like I could feel less strongly.
And I believe, I do believe we can go, I do believe we can go, we can have each school go with its own color.
Yes.
That's number one. One of the discussions about the yell was to actually break up the yell with, because it's three sections, to break it up into, into, you know, it's actually four sections, to break it up into different colors.
No. I don't see a long color.
We, that doesn't go flat, Paul, Paul's saying. I will also tell you that every window will-
Of course, that's what you asked.
Every window proposal, proposal, I stress the word proposals, that every window is also marked from the outside with their room number, which is a safety issue. That's a brand-new thing that-
All kidding aside, I think the colors are always fun to pick and choose and all that, but we're talking, this upgrade is, is not only are we, are we making our school environment warmer, safer, safe is really the word that we're looking for. These windows are going to be, you know, all with the, I don't want to say bulletproof, because it wasn't, it was-
Childproof.
It's childproof glass. The, the idea of not having window AC units installed anymore, they're all going to be installed professionally, so we don't have to worry about break-ins or these getting kicked in and all that, so safety on that end of it. The idea that a teacher can open a window and have it be left open without putting books under it, like, it's just, it's going to make the school just so much better, but safety really is, is, was our main drive behind all this here, so, yeah, colors aside. I thought it was Joe's idea, it was great to let the, let the principals and teachers decide, and if that's what we end up doing, that's what we'll do. Any thoughts?
I think that's a great idea. That's where they are. I personally like the blue, but I like the blue.
I agree, too.
They should have to vote on the school, they're going to be next year, so.
Yeah.
In case they change their school next year.
We've had, we've left it in the front office for, for the adults that give us input and stuff, but-
Tam is boring.
But what about having the schools with all three different colors?
Sure.
Yeah.
They're all in yell now.
Something to complain about.
The JCS is brown, the yell is brown. This is brown, no, actually, no, they're not, they're all brown. No, the high school's not, the high school, middle school, it's on.
Well, we appreciate your help in choosing color.
Well, I've been doing it for a month now, I'm in like-
Well.
Very fast.
I like the blue.
Okay. We'll put that into the consideration.
Five votes for blue.
All right.
School committee likes the blue, feel free to disregard us.
If you don't like it, we're elected, so.
Thanks, Wade.
Thanks, Wade.
All right, next introductions, Dr. Vayetta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to bring to the forefront our three new administrators that are with us tonight. Lisa Giuliani, who's our acting principal of Norton High School. Next to her is Gregory Hood, who's the interim assistant principal of Norton High School. And way on the other side is the new principal of the Yell' Elementary School, Martin Gagan. So, I'm going to start with Lisa, just for a few words, and then I'll do a little resume review with Greg and with Marty, and feel free to ask him any questions if you like. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you, thanks for having me. Prior to working at Norton, I was a dean of students and a science teacher in Norwood for 11 years. The past four years, I've had the absolute pleasure of working with an amazing community at Norton High School, and I'm looking forward to, feel very privileged to continue working with the community in my new role as an acting principal. We've had an incredibly strong start to the school year, the vibe is very positive. It helps that we've had the support of Dr. Martis, you know, the last few days, and I just want to quote him, because on a couple of occasions he has said-
We all do.
Yeah. On a couple of occasions, he has said that Norton is a hidden gem, and I couldn't agree with him more. So, again, honored and privileged, and very thankful for this chance.
So, Greg comes to us via Waymouth Public Schools, where he's an interim dean and also a leader at the, in middle school mathematics with them. And it was very interesting, because this is an opportunity, and Greg, feel free to speak to him, where he's young, he's new to administration, but I can publicly say that after three days, and he literally came in on the first day of school of Welcome Back Day, that there's a nice, positive vibe about this team. And I hope, as I said to Lisa, I made her acting principal, because I said to her, make the changes that you think Norton High School needs in order to be better than it is today. And she has that full authority. We'll talk about all that other stuff, about full-time role and all that later on in the year, but right now, she and Greg are doing a fantastic job, so welcome, Greg.
Thank you. I think the key word you said was team. I've never felt more a part of a team than I have since, in the nine days or whatever it's been. I'm not, like, you know, I'm not kidding, like, I've never been more welcome to a professional community than I have been since I've been in Norwood. I mean, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Weh, weh. Let's see how, she's from Norwood. Let's see how day tech goes. We got you.
In Norton, and I, it has literally been a pleasure, and thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you and, you know, inviting me here, and hidden gem is exactly what it is. It is, I, I don't have the words to describe it. I've never felt more at home in a professional position than I feel right now. And I am thrilled to be here, and I can see myself finishing my career here, and I hope to finish my career here. And it is just, I'm just so pleased to be here. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
On the other side of the table, maybe a little bit deeper into his career, is Martin Gagan, who comes to us via Middle Coral Public Schools. Literally about 15, 16 years in administration now, through all the years, former high school teacher and all of that. Absolutely skyrocketed to the top of the search committee, of which some of you participated. He's very well-established within the industry, as I've communicated with you. I can tell you that the administrators and many teachers are absolutely excited because of the background that he brings, and I can tell you, we appreciated Anthony and his role here. It's different with, with Marty, but it's different with any of us who are coming to a role, he's being himself, so welcome, and you wish you well.
Thank you very much, thank you very much for having me. I think Lisa stole all the words here, that being privileged to be here is definitely huge. I've never felt more welcome. It's been tremendous. I think you have eight days, I have two and a half days. That I was trying to tell Joe that I would have come in Tuesday morning and been here with the kids, but I signed my contract Tuesday at 10:00, so, so it really has been a whirlwind three days, but it's been tremendous. The teachers are incredible, the kids are amazing, and I couldn't feel more welcome. And even the parents just stopping me when I was outside with the buses or with the cars and just kind of welcoming me has really been an amazing experience for me, and I'm just excited, and very excited to be here, very excited to see where we can go. I've only really met the faculty just walking through their classrooms and just saying hello, and saying hello to the kids, so Monday will be our first kind of faculty meeting where I get a chance to really talk to them and be with them, so it's just going to be an amazing kind of time for us, and I hope to keep you abreast of all the things that we're doing and how we're moving.
I think it's one of the things we want to do, Marty and I have been talking a little bit, which is a little different as the principal of the building, and he came in so late, it's a huge transition, and it is for Greg as well, but it's either, I think, for Marty a little different, because you're trying to run the building and so on, is trying to get some time for families. We've talked a little bit about maybe having some flex time for those parents who can come in in the morning, have some coffee with them, and talk, maybe some parents in the afternoon, and then maybe some parents in the evening, so I think we're going to put in some time in the next couple of weeks, we'll put some dates together, and any of you are, of course, invited to come as well. Welcome, all of you.
Yes, I'd just like to say, you know, we do welcome you to Norton. We're excited about some of the changes that are going to take place. I finally have a student, and I shouldn't say that, because I don't really want him at the high school, but I finally have a student at the high school, and I've heard nothing but great things from him, his friends, the parents, and then I already spoke with you, Marty, earlier, that I received a few texts today, that you are top-notch, because you brought popsicles. Might have been somebody else that brought those.
No, I think that was me.
They think it's you. So, already, in two and a half days, it's good.
He did it well, because he said, I had nothing to do with the buses, but I did bring the popsicles. It was off to a great start. But no, we appreciate it.
Just so you got, like, I've never been in a district where this has happened, but, I mean, I really so appreciate it, just even being here, being able to talk about what we're doing, and so I thank you very much.
Well, we love to hear the good stuff, because, you know, the negative always comes out first, so it's nice to hear, and please let us know when your school, I know that I've been lucky enough to attend the things that happen at your school, so just shoot us an email and let us know. And I know, especially at the, at the Yell' School, they do a lot of projects, a lot of different things. Walking through that, that science fair and the imagination thing that they do, it was fantastic. I loved it, so please let us know when you're doing those special things, because it's, we want to see the kids, too.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
I'm sure Dr. Martis loves the new school. He's the one that pointed out our old cafeteria had no windows. I never realized it until I was sitting, I was like, oh, my God.
One of the things you commented on the other day was how smoothly lunches are going.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to bring up Aaron Long, district director for Chartwells, and a key partner for us, Michael Caro, our director of dining services for Chartwells Norton Public Schools. So, welcome to them. It's just a simple introduction today. We will have them back either at the end of the month or early next month. We can talk a little bit about all the changes that are taking place, that I know many of you have already commented on, and I know that we're getting provided with a lot of positive commentary, so welcome to the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. So, again, my name is Aaron Long, I'm a district manager with Chartwells. What that means is I cover several school districts in the state of Massachusetts. I've been doing K-12 for 25 years, K-12 food service, 15 years with Chartwell, so I've done this many, many times, and I'd like to introduce Mike Caro. Can you tell them a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, I'm very happy to be here. I've been in restaurants for 35 years, done it many different facets. I agree with everything that I've heard here today, that everyone has been very kind and very supportive. I got here in late July, so there wasn't many people in the building, but I haven't met anyone that wasn't extremely supportive. I have Wade, principals here, Mr. Wells, Dr., I mean, everybody, honestly. I can't say how happy I am to be here, and we came, we're very happy that we brought a lot of girls from last year, and we brought a lot of exciting things already, so we're off to a good start, very happy about that, and we'll continue to let you know. My office is open to anyone. Call me anytime, email me anytime, I promise I'll get back to you as soon as I can.
Michael does have a Norton email address, so it's just, it's M. Caro at, just like it's for everyone else.
Yep, definitely. I do my best. I've received calls from parents, and they've all been kind also, they've had questions, I've answered them to the best of my ability. And, you know, like I said, I am just, I am really excited to be here, because everyone has been so kind and supportive, very much so.
One of the things that's exciting about Michael is he shared, he shared a fun fact with us the other day, since we're doing fun facts today, since Wade did one, too, is this might have, this weekend, Labor Day weekend, might have been the first time in 35 years he didn't, he didn't have to show up at a restaurant to work.
Oh.
So, that's kind of cool. It's kind of cool that, that, you know, someone with such an experience is able to come and join us, join the team, and also at the same time, better his own life. I think that's fantastic.
And I'd also like to give a shout-out to the staff. I think, you know, going through transition and change is never easy, and these ladies, we were fortunate enough that a majority of them came to work for us. We're going through union negotiations, which started this summer, we have another meeting next week, but they have really, really stepped up and rallied, and it is, it is a difficult transition for them, because they're used to doing things a certain way. So, we are putting out fires as we need to, but they've really embraced the program so far, and, you know, when you consider the heat wave that we've been having, on top of just working in an environment with no air conditioning, and then you're turning on ovens to 350 degrees, they have really been good sports about it, and it's been, it's been challenging as far as the weather goes, but they're doing a great job, they're, they're learning every day, and the small progress that we've seen even in the last three days, I'm just so excited and thrilled for what's going to happen, even in a month from now, you know, because they've done such a great job in three days, the sky's the limit, you know, once they get comfortable and really get their feet on it, so I wanted to thank them for that. It's been, it's been tough.
I'm glad to hear the majority have stayed on, because I wasn't sure, actually, how many have stayed. Also, the newsletter is fantastic, the healthy options, great, and as a parent of a child with food allergies, I feel way more comfortable with him being able to get something that won't make him sick, so, you know, really excited about this change as well. I mean, sometimes, change can be scary, but sometimes it can be good, so welcome and thank you.
That's the benefit of the Nutrislice menu.
Yeah.
Because you can click on certain allergens and understand and know what is safe and what.
Right, I've already looked at it. It's very helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, we'll see you guys in a future meeting as well, so thanks for coming out today.
Thank you.
All right, any other business?
Just a general comment that the Madam Chair would allow me to, is I want to thank our entire staff, administrative assistants, my central office staff, who've gone really unrecognized by all of us, our teaching staff, custodian staff, my folks who work directly for me on a day-to-day basis, either running the schools or as directors or in their different positions. The food service, I mean, the last few days, I've gone to the cafeterias, it's difficult in their doing it, and yet, this office has not received one complaint from a parent or a student or a staff member, who just pulled through, we did it, we got through the heat wave, the second heat wave, tomorrow's supposed to be about 20 degrees better, but I think everybody needs to be just really recognized, from those of us that deal directly with students on a day-to-day basis, to those of us that work to keep our buildings open, safe, and so on and so forth. And to be quite honest, that includes our bus drivers, who although they work for another company, are going through change, change, change every day, I want to recognize them. And I want, and I want to recognize all of those patient parents, those frustrated parents. It makes us better, we hate it, we hate it on social media more so than we, I don't, I do, I like it, just, just, just come to me, tell me you hated the decision that I I do, I like it, just come to me, tell me you hated the decision that I made, I'm fine with that, and my goal is to improve it and make it better. Safety is important to us, it is the most important thing that I've done since I've been here. The amount, the amount of changes that we've made through your offices, through the School Committee, have been about safety, and we will, we will resolve this issue, we will get it done. Ideas are welcome, the kids are awesome, there's nothing better. Today, unfortunately, nobody had a cell phone to do it, but take a nice picture, but I had one of the best things that happened to me in my now 10 years as a superintendent, and I was down at the JCS for welcoming preschoolers, right? And I'm reading names, and they're introducing themselves, and some of them are very shy, and some of them are going to be future politicians, and some are going to be dancers and so on. They were, they were so cute, but what was awesome was, we had 99 preschoolers in our district today, that's the biggest number we've had for opening of school in the history[1719.15]